Delmar and the governing body of all other special assessment taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Supervisor Hemmingsen, will you lead us?
Are we getting feedback over there?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh. I was going to say I could hear something. I'm not deaf.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are all.
Are there any new employees to be introduced? Okay, seeing no new employees. Counsel, are there any reportable actions from closed session?
Nothing to report today.
Okay. Are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action for the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And I think we have item eight that we're going to need to table to the next meeting due to process, I guess, for Smith River days. Is that correct?
My understanding was it was being pulled for discussion?
Oh, pulled for discussion. Okay. We will pull item eight from the -- for discussion on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing no other additions or corrections, we'll receive other brief reports or announcements relative to the County of Delmar programs and projects, progress of the two-by-two committees, goal committees, and/or board staff travel training reports. So Supervisor Finnegan, will you start us off?
Sure. Started the last couple of weeks with that groundbreaking that we had down at the harbor. Well attended and, well, you've read about it in the newspaper, you've seen the pictures and been talked to death, so it is what it is. It's finally getting another piece of our infrastructure well on its way to being what the community needs. Then I attended the National Association of Counties' annual conference. I sit on their transportation subcommittee, I chair their aviation subcommittee, and a lot of it's anticlimactic. As you know, we have a new transportation bill, it's a two-year bill. Part of that is a one-year reauthorization for the National Forest County Schools money. And then also part of that, they tried, it was another run at Essential Air Service to do away with that, which failed, so that is still in there. So we're sort of in a period where things passed, but they're going to come do again almost immediately, and I'm speaking firstly of the National Forest County Schools, the timber receipts. But it was a good time and a good time to network. A new president for NACO is going to be Chris Rogers. Two things that he wants to work on is justice, smart justice, which is right in line with our AB 109. In other words, don't bother putting people through the system or incarcerating people unless it's violent or sexual in nature. And so I think our agenda in California is going to meld very nicely with the national agenda there. And he had some other issues that he wanted to work on. Then yesterday, I was in Sacramento for the signing of the memorandum of agreement with the Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management, the State Association of Supervisors, and the Rural County Supervisors Association. And so I will be bringing that forward to this board to discuss, and hopefully we'll adopt that. It's voluntary for boards of supervisors. I would encourage us to please take advantage of this tool. It is mandatory for the communication, and it is upfront communication, is recognizing counties as governments, and a government-to-government vetting of the issues even before the public's made aware of them. So it's a good tool. And that was signed, and that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I left my phone, which is also my calendar, at home, so I'm doing my meetings from memory. I missed the harbor dedication because I was at -- on my way to the Coastal Commission, and at the Coastal Commission, we found no substantial issue for the Hobbs Wall project, which was pretty exciting. And on the next Coastal Commission agenda, there is a restoration project for Talawa dunes that's being recommended for approval. And the interesting piece of that is that it will be both mechanical removal of the grass and then where the grass reaches into sensitive habitat, it would be removed by hand. So we're going to see some big improvement there, that we might see some movement into the dune, to the back dune, because the foredune is being -- not allowing any sand to reach into the back dunes because of the grass. So there could be a definite improvement there, and it's being recommended for approval, which is always exciting, to see that it's not being recommended to go to de novo. The Historical Society met, and we did a presentation on the history of the Brother Jonathan Cemetery, because I think that a lot of people in the community don't realize that from Pebble Beach between Ninth and Eighth Street, at one point possibly reaching all the way to C Street, was the first cemetery in our community, and there's very little history on it. And with the burning of the Masonic Temple, almost all of that history is now gone. But I was yesterday looking through the 1854 records that we have as Board of Supervisors, and I have a feeling that we may be able to reclaim some of that information through those documents that we have upstairs, so I'm hoping for that. Redwood Park Association is still working with the Save the Redwoods League and trying to have an agreement of how to keep the Mill Creek annex open for weekends. With the blow up at the state level with the parks, I have no idea what this is going to possibly mean, other than that we're going to still try to move forward and make sure that the park remains open. But the park may remain open anyway, because there's a movement at the state level to use some of that reclaimed dollars to actually keep parks open. I've been working with the group with Sutter Coast, trying to figure out a way to get it to a level of transparency of public discussion of what we're going to be able to do because of the significance of the regionalization and of the significance of the possibility of putting us to a critical access hospital, which would require that it be 25 beds or less. And then with the reserved beds that you have for surgery and OB and the prison, we would be looking at a hospital that would be very, very small. And we're only, if we become critical access, our hospital will only allow you to stay there for four days, which means that if you have pneumonia or something where you're going to need to be in the hospital for eight to 10 days, you're going to have to be in a different community. And so there's a meeting on Wednesday evening for the doctors who are going to try to talk again about how can the public be of assistance in making sure that this large corporation doesn't abandon us and doesn't change our lifestyle here, because it could be extremely detrimental. It's from six to eight at the Creston Elk Auditorium, and people should attend and try to figure out what we can possibly do. I also would like to ask that at our next board meeting, that we bring forward a resolution that the county, this county Board of Supervisors and all districts for which we act will not suspend the Brown Act with the adoption of the new budget, with the mandate that the Brown Act's cost has to be, there's a mandate that it has to be paid for. And so when this budget was approved, the Brown Act was suspended in relationship to the requirement of a 72-hour notice of an agenda, which I think that could be a very slippery slope. It also took out the need for comment on closed session, took out the need for closed session to even be posted of what the issues are, and it took out the requirement for items to be added to an agenda subsequent to the posting. But I, there are communities and cities around the state that are actually taking resolutions that they will commit to making sure that the Brown Act is honored, even though it will now be an unfunded mandate. But I believe that our, that the Board of Supervisors should take the lead in making sure that this community continues to make sure that we operate in a transparent mode, and that's the first step, is making sure that those agendas are posted 72 hours in advance, and that we follow the requirements of the Brown Act. So I would like a resolution to be brought forward by this board, and hopefully we will see other boards in the community and other districts also adopt that they will commit to keeping the Brown Act intact and working. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with Karen Kovacs about possibilities at Point St. George in, I mean at Lake Earl, and I think we're doing a two-by-two with that about what Fish and Game has ideas for. Wes Chesbrough is coming up tomorrow, and we are honoring him at the Senior Center for the, at a luncheon where he has been a great assistance in keeping the doors open during a very, very, very hard times. The Senior Center Board met, and the budget is short, and we need to figure ways to still offer services and not cut services and meet the budget, so we have, we do have a budget shortfall, which is going to be problematic. I have had several phone calls from people concerned about our possible reduction of service with the dialerite services, that there are seniors that are very concerned that they're not going to be able to afford the increase in costs that it's, because it actually costs a dollar more to go to the doctor, if you have to get to the doctor on dialerite. So we need to really, really figure out a way to assist the seniors and disabled on the dialerite services. And tomorrow, we're also meeting with the, trying to figure out a safe route to schools. Mike and I are meeting with the superintendent and Tina to take a look at the possibility of Glenn Street actually having a safe walk path for children to get to and from school. And I think that's it. I don't know if I report, I think I reported out last time that Jared Huffman had come to town, and he too is coming to town on the 18th. He's coming to attend the salmon festival, and then he's also going to do a, just general meet and greet barbecue at the Democratic Headquarters, that everyone is invited to come and meet him and get a feel for him of what he has to offer. And I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Hemmingsen.
Yes, thank you. I also attended the harbor groundbreaking, where I have to say Chair Sullivan represented the board well in the speaking that he did. He did a very nice job relaying the message of partnerships and how it takes all of us to work together to accomplish things that are as big as the harbor rebuilding is going to be. So I thought he did an excellent job. Also went to the Smith River Gym groundbreaking, where Supervisor Sullivan again did a nice job of representing this board. One of the things that he said, that was also very good. Looking forward to seeing that project go forward. Had Solid Waste Gender Review, that meeting we'll have later today, 3:30 today. Had a meeting with the city and some county staff on a possible water line going out Old Mill Road, which I think would be a good project. Had a, an RCD meeting, they didn't have a quorum in Smith River, they didn't have a quorum, so we just talked about some projects and things that are going on, but they took no action. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority Special Meeting, where veneer displayed the project picture pictorially. Did a real nice job, had all the plans, had everything going forward so that we can get a bid on the project, and we can finally see what it's going to cost us and when we can get going. So real excited about that. Really looking forward to that project finally, maybe having a groundbreaking ceremony for that. Went to Wairika, the county administrative officer and I went to Wairika to a North Coast interregional water management plan, which the RCD has a project or two that they've put application in for, hoping to put an application in for the water line possibly going out Old Mill Road, if that decides to be a project that we want to do. And anyway, there's projects out there. Hopefully, Delmar County will finally get some projects approved, and we'll get some of that money in Delmar County. After that meeting, had a five-county Salamander meeting. There are some real budget problems going on. It lost a grant with Fish and Game, who was, who funded most of their programming, and funding is drying up, although I find it really kind of strange. I agree with Supervisor McClure that we need to be transparent, and we need to have, you know, we need to have the Brown Act. It's a great thing, but these agencies, like state parks, how transparent are they when they have $50 million sitting there that evidently the director didn't even know about? I think that's, yeah. I think that's the transparency that we need at this stage. It's not so much, although I agree that we need to be transparent, and we do need to adhere to the Brown Act. I think these agencies leave a little bit to be desired on how they're handling their funds and their resources. So, and, you know, when they threaten us with closure of parks, which is a big part of our economy, and here they got a stash of money sitting there, you know, I just, I find it very disappointing. Anyway, the, getting back to the North Coast interregional water management plan, they've started an outreach program for disadvantaged counties. And I think that finally, if we can get them to make a move on it, I think that's going to work pretty nicely for our area. There's projects out there that we can't fund the application, or the designing, or any of that kind of stuff, and there's money out there for them to help us with that. So hopefully, we'll get that moving. Yesterday, or, yeah, yesterday afternoon, had a LAFCO meeting. We approved the MSR for the Delmar Healthcare District, their MSR and their sphere of influence. And that was about it for me.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor McNamara.
Thank you. I also had to miss the harbor groundbreaking, which is very disappointing, but I had a prior commitment, and with such short notice that we received, I wasn't able to get out of the other commitment. Had a Senior Center Board meeting, as Supervisor McClure mentioned, and I think there was mention that we may be getting the weatherization program back. I don't know how soon, I'm sure that's got a lot to go through yet before we get it back, but it'd be great if we did, because we had a lot of people that used that program. I did a gender review for Chair Sullivan while he was basking in the sun and out of the country. I don't think that was fair trade off. I also had the Air Quality Management District in Eureka, and we just went over, kind of reviewed the items that were accomplished in this last year, and Supervisor Yeagle really brought up a, kind of a hot topic, no pun intended, but forest fires. We're so concerned about the air pollution and the particulate matter and everything that affects our air quality, yet the Forest Service spends billions of dollars fighting forest fires every year. If some of that money could be spent to help manage those forests, you know, maybe they need to look at moving some money around. We'll see. Also attended LAFCO with Supervisor Hemmingsen. George Williamson, our director, is doing a wonderful job. All our MSRs, which are municipal service reviews for all the districts, are all in except three. We had the public hearing on the sphere of influence for the healthcare district. I will also be present at the meeting with Supervisor McClure Wednesday evening. And that was about it.
Okay. Thank you. Couple things, and thank you to Supervisor McNamara for sitting in a gender review for me. I appreciate that. I had a dinner with Senator Lamalpha and Assembly Member Nielsen, who is going to, looks like the perennial favorite to replace Senator Lamalpha when Senator Lamalpha wins the congressional seat from Herger, or not from Herger, but a replacement of Herger. So had a pretty long conversation with him, and we're going to have actually two state senators for a two-year overlap, so I think that's, I think it's great that he's been, he's made the visit up here, and he's definitely approachable. I've met him a couple of different times, and he knows a lot of the issues we're dealing with, including the Sutter Coast thing that's come up, so. And then I attended the Tea Party meeting where they both spoke at, and that was really well-attended. And then had the honor of speaking at both groundbreaking ceremonies. The harbor, which was really well-attended, a good function, and it's nice to see that finally get up and going. And then also attended the groundbreaking the next day for the Smith River Gym. And I, historically, I don't know how many times in Delmar County's history, you have two major groundbreakings in two consecutive days. As big as the harbor project is, it is a huge project, the most impressive thing about the Smith River Gym project is it's all community-funded, from the bond, from the voters passing Measure A, to the community involvement out in Smith River that got the thing going to begin with, and all the fundraising they've done. It's truly impressive deal, and it does go back to the partnerships, but that is a community project. So that, to me, that makes it even more impressive. And I am looking forward to the ribbon cutting at some point, to see when the gym doors, and we've been told a year, so we'll see. Sometimes construction doesn't always work out that way. Had a meeting with Maggie Kraft, who's the new executive director of the Area One and Aging, and I really appreciated her honesty with questions I've been asking the agency for a long time, about budget questions and stuff like that, and she is in the process of researching it for me. I liked it because she didn't dodge any questions. The previous director had a tendency to do that quite a bit. So our big concern is that we continue to have the same percentage funding coming in Delmar County for Meals on Wheels and some of the senior center projects and other things that they fund, that those continue, and that there's transparency with it. And it is, I'm glad Supervisor Hemmingsen mentioned it, is the transparency is really at the local level, you know, we're, everything's out on the table, and it's frustrating to run across state agencies, and you've got chunks of money hidden, and you've tried poor for the last several years, even put a ballot initiative on, and you're hiding $50 million. I do think the agencies are a big issue going forward, and have been an ongoing issue, and they want to make some corrections at the state level, you know, fix that. That would go a long way. Had a chance to also, got a chance to look at our commercial, apparently the city had it on their agenda yesterday, or last week, basically showing our Today in America commercial, and I thought it turned out pretty good, in terms of, it was funny thing, is I talked to COO, our CAO, Jay, about when they filmed the fish catching scene, they were literally out just filming the river, and they caught a fish just right as they were filming it. It's, I mean, what's the chance of that? So, very impressive. And other than that, that's it.
Obviously, the chance is very good.
Yeah. The odds are high. Yes.
I would just like to add, I had mentioned Supervisor Yeagle's name, and everybody was probably thinking, well, who's he? He is on the Air Quality Board also for Trinity County, which is where, you know, they just had another forest fire, so he's been concerned. They have so many fires over there, but I'm hoping he gets real involved with trying to.
Well Supervisor Yeagle's been on for several, for several years on the Trinity County Board, and he's always been a very vocal proponent of the Forest Service dealing with their forests and managing it, and preventing these horrible, you know, for a state that claims to be so health-initiative, to not deal with these forest fires, these are, that's a bigger impact than anything that's going to come out of a car.
That's right.
So. What people don't know about him is that he used to work for the Forest Service for years, and was in a position to do something about it when he was there, and now that he's elected officially, he's whining about the Forest Service.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to the, we'll.
Just saying.
All right. Moving on. Okay. So at this point, we are going to go on to our consent agenda, and, yeah, we got public comment. I think we actually go to, we're going to go to public comment at this period, because it's a timed item. Oh, sorry. And we almost skipped over CEO and his brief report. I can't believe I almost did that. So at this point, we're going to listen to a brief report from our county administrative officer, Mr. Serena.
Chair, would you like a brief report?
Just talk.
We've been working on a couple of things in administration. The Manual Arts Building, the repairs, it's virtually complete. We have a walkthrough to see whether or not we have any punch list items. I believe that's tomorrow, so that should be finished up, making that building about as ADA compliant and safe as we can at this point. The Battery Point Project, it continues, it should be finished here, I believe, in September. And we signed the contract for the Point St. George environmental document and some design work last week. I signed that one in order to expedite it, in order to get us out there before the biological window closes for this spring slash summer, and get some of the studies done. That should finish up, when we're done with that document, should finish up Phase One. And that should go on until at least December. And we've been continuing to work on the budget proposal and process, and waiting to hear what the final year end will be sometime in the middle of August. We're hoping that once the accounts payable and receivable come in, we can get a rough estimate to be able to work off of our year end for 11/12. That will be continuing, and the board will be hearing more about that, and possibly a budget workshop in probably the second week, or second meeting in August. Currently, we're replacing wood chips at three of our parks with the rubber mulch from the recycled tire grant program out of the state of California. And I've been dealing with various departmental issues and projects, but including a few evaluations. We've also been reviewing, when we have a little bit of time, the grants database, looking for any type of revenue that might be able to offset county costs. In addition to that, you know, again, that more budget-related, but we have been successful in finding a few that might be of help to some of the departments, not necessarily offsetting existing costs, but for programs in the future.
All right. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to go on to public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. So this is any item that's not on the consent agenda or listed on this thing. Okay, seeing no public, yes.
This is not public comment, but I did, I forgot, I did get a, we had sent a letter to the Forest Service requesting an extension on the comment period for the travel management plan, and I inquired a couple of weeks ago to administration about not getting a response, and wondered about the response, and the communication that I got back was that Mr. Kelly never received the letter, but that Randy Moore, who we sent a copy to, did receive the letter. I got a call from Mr. Kelly yesterday, saying that he didn't, that Randy Moore didn't receive his letter until after the comment period was over, which I understand is not the case. But in any event, Mr. Kelly informed me that he decided not to extend the comment period. I felt that it was unreasonable to ask the public, you, the public, to comment on a map and information that was incomplete. And they decided to leave that information incomplete and close the public comment period, and now we will get the alternatives of whatever they come up with. But anyway, I thought that was worth mentioning. I'm sorry I didn't bring it up sooner, my comment period, but.
Well, I'm going to close public comment and just follow up with, it is, I think it goes back to, this being a federal agency, but it goes back to each of these steps along the way on this travel management plan, we could have come to some type of resolution a long time ago, but the feds don't feel like they need to deal with county, and unfortunately they do. Okay, so at this point, or fortunately for us, it's, they do. Going to item 33 on the agenda, we're going to, 10:30, receive a quarterly treasury update from the treasurer, tax collector, and take action as necessary. from the treasurer tax collector and take action as necessary.
Thank you, Don.
I was asked to provide a brief report regarding the investment activity with the county for the last quarter, April, April 2012 through June. So in April, being a tax due month, we generated additional deposits to life. However, knowing as we approach the end of the fiscal year, we need to keep funds liquid to pay year-end claims, we left a majority of the funds in life with the exception of a four-year CD we purchased through Discovery Bank. The printouts, there's a printout that shows April activity highlighted there. This is a third CD we purchased in recent months as the rates of CD returns are a little more attractive. We had a Fannie Mae bond earning about 1% called in April and these funds were turned around in May and we purchased a Federal Home Loan Bank step coupon earning 1%. So in the summer months, however, as we approach the summer months, we usually have more money going out than going in, so in June, there were no additional investment activities. During this quarter, the interest earnings were as follows in our life account, $12,087.96 in interest was earned, our Cal Trust General Fund, $7,793.01, the Cal Trust Mitigation Fund, $11,597.66, and bond earnings that paid in that period of time, we had $16,250. So that's a total interest earnings of $47,728.63. And that's the activity for that period.
Any questions from Supervisors?
I have, this isn't secret information or anything.
No.
Is there any reason that we can't receive this when we receive our packet?
Well, in light of the fact that I was told after I was put on the agenda that to come before you and I was on vacation for two weeks, just getting back last night, I did not get the information to you ahead of time, so I apologize for that, so.
It would just be nice to have it to be able to go over, so if we did have any questions, it would be much, much easier for us to ask the questions, but.
Certainly, sorry.
Yeah, any, any questions from Supervisors on that?
No, I was just noticing that the, the one you said that you transferred to it on the, we purchased the FHLB step coupon earning at 1%.
Uh-huh.
So when it says step coupon, does that mean that it will?
A step coupon, what it does, it initially will start off at a certain interest earning and you receive that earning for a certain period of time and then either that coupon will be called or it will step, in other words, it will increase as far as your interest earnings. Chances are, this will be called. But we kind of know that going into it and so we kind of take a look at what's out there at that time.
Thank you, Don.
Sure.
Any other questions? I am glad that you've got some CDs in here that, and I'm not sure what the, within the parameters of looking at some local banks in terms of.
I did look at some local banks.
Yeah.
You know, I look more at their community banks because some of the larger banks are, you know, unfortunately, they weren't quite as attractive.
Okay.
That's the only reason why.
I just have one other question. Did we have an opportunity to buy the school bonds? Do we have?
They're outside the parameter.
Are they outside?
Yeah, they're.
That's why, I'm just curious, I'm just asking a question.
Several years ago?
Yeah.
I was not, yeah, I was not, there was other agencies that were able to get in and buy those prior to us going to be able to.
The county was not, we were not allowed to?
It's not that we weren't allowed to, but at the time, what was left over was not attractive.
Okay, curious, just curious.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Don.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we are going to take up the consent agenda at this point. And.
Move to approve.
Okay, we are going to pull number, item eight to have a separate discussion about that. So it's been moved to minus number eight to move to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any public comment on all items except number eight? Okay, Jeremy, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions on consent? Okay, Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, minus item 21, I have a conflict of interest on that. Okay, we are going to take up number eight at this point. Allow the request to close a portion of First Street in Smith River, California to allow setup and tear down in time for the eighth annual Smith River Days as requested by the Chair of the Smith River Heritage Association. Jay?
I think that the board can take the action to, as requested, but also with the condition that they work with the Community Development Department on the issuance of the encroachment permit. And if there's somebody here that would like to speak to it from Community Development, that's fine, but I think in general for, to expedite this, the board can take the action and then require them to get that encroachment permit.
Okay, so I guess the only reason we're pulling this at this point, because the board's fully, I've been speaking for myself, but I assume the board's fully in support of the eighth annual Smith River Days, so.
The issue on this one is the request came to the Board of Supervisors prior to going downstairs, which is the proper.
Okay, so it's just protocol on that. Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
With, with the?
With the directive that they seek an encroachment permit.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved, or excuse me, second. Jeremy, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
I just have a question real quick, to make sure I'm not missing something or I've got something on my agenda that you don't have. You kept saying item number eight?
Yeah, it was item eight on the agenda.
On the consent agenda.
Well, item eight shows me that that is to ratify the appointments at Sullivan's task force.
No, that's number nine.
It's eight on my agenda, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know if, well, I'm just wondering if something is missing in between on my agenda.
Must be. Or you have two eights, maybe?
No.
Is it on the actual?
I'll have to, I'll have to compare afterwards.
If I, okay, sure. If I could, within that consent agenda was a resolution honoring Jimmy Smith from Humboldt County. I met Jimmy Smith a number of years ago as, as part of the Climate Management Zone Fisheries Coalition and he was, I'm not going to read the whole resolution, but he was instrumental in, in getting the interregional manage, or interregional water management plan together and he's been involved with that for a number of years. Due to health problems, he is forced to, I shouldn't say forced to retire, but has elected to retire and not seek another term at this point, so I'd just like to wish him well for health-wise and for the future. He was a neat guy, or is a neat guy, I shouldn't say was.
He's a great guy.
Yeah, neat guy, and a neat guy to work with and always kept me in the loop as far as any, anything that was coming down the pike that maybe would affect Delmar County. So anyway, I'm going to miss him at the meetings, but hopefully he'll still be around to, to drop in on us once in a while.
And just so the public knows, he's, Jimmy Smith is a three-term Humboldt County supervisor, so impressive in itself, three terms, so Jimmy was always very approachable anytime I dealt with him, so. Okay, any other comment on that? Okay, so at this point, that is the consent agenda, we are going to go to budget transfers. We can do one by one, or we'll entertain a motion to, or if we want to break it up in pieces.
There's a bunch of them.
I will make a motion to approve budget transfers, 06-11, 06-12, 06-13, 06-14, 15, 16, 25, 26, 27, and 23.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, second, and the, and those in the, for those with most of our agendas, item 22 through 31 are the budget transfers for those that are looking at budget.
It's from the viewing agenda review.
Oh, is that what it is? Oh, okay. Okay, any public comment on the budget transfers that have been, the motions on the floor? Seeing no public comment, I'll close that, bring it back to the board. Any other comments on budget transfers or questions? Okay, Jeremy, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, at this point, we're going to go on to item 34. Continue the public hearing to vacate a portion of a public right-of-way over Surfstown Court until August 14th, 2012, to allow the parties to execute necessary documents as requested by the Deputy Director of Engineering and Roads. Tina?
We have one more deed to get signed and we'll have this complete the next board meeting.
And we'll have the visual thing, we'll know. Okay, good, excellent, cool, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing? Or do I need to do that now? Let's just, I think we just continue it.
Just continue.
Okay. And it's continued. Item 35, Legislative and Budget Issues. Consider miscellaneous legislative budget issues per to the county of Delmar authorize the Chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments. Jay?
Today, we don't, we don't have any letters for the board to sign at this point. We've been analyzing the trailer bills as they've come in and looking for whatever impacts or positives they may have on our budget. And at this point, primarily don't have a lot of impacts negatively or positively at this point. As I mentioned earlier, we are continuing the process of looking for the auditors' numbers at the year-end and then actively looking at solutions based on what we projected out at this point. We should have a better projection probably within the week and then a final projection in the middle of August. Suffice to say that it's, there's still a fairly large hole in the budget and we will have to fill that by the end of September.
All right, thanks for the good news. Okay, going on to item 36, Presentation by Gary Blatney, Director of Health and Human Services, to discuss the recent California State Department of Healthcare Services rejection of Delmar County and six other neighboring counties' requests to implement managed care for the Medi-Cal population through a county-organized health system model. Discuss legislative representatives and potential board involvement, meeting with the State Department of Health and?
Healthcare Services.
Healthcare Services, okay, officials. All right, Gary.
Okay, so this is an update. We had talked about a month ago and you had directed myself and others from the county to assist in working with the State Department of Healthcare Services around managed care for Medi-Cal, for the Medi-Cal population. And in our community, that's approximately 8,000 individuals right now and with Medi-Cal expansion now with the federal law approved at the Supreme Court level, we expect the, with health reform, to see at least another couple thousand Medi-Cal recipients. So we're going to be close to about 10,000 or 11,000 of our residents receiving Medi-Cal. And with that, of course, any decisions that are made about their healthcare are important to all of us. Many of those recipients are children. So we proposed, along with seven other counties, essentially in our region, Humboldt, Siskiyou, Modoc, Shasta, Lake, counties, Trinity in our neighborhood, all together, we proposed that the state sort of carve us out of their future plans for managed care and treat us a little bit uniquely and allow us to connect with a existing community-organized health system that has been very successful, working in Solano, Marin, and, let me see what other counties are currently working in, Sonoma, Yola, Napa, and Mendocino. And all we wanted to do was connect with those, continue that success. The advantages of that model are very clear to us. One is that there's local representation on the governing board, that's very unique. The other is that they have the best health outcomes for the populations that they currently serve, better than private health insurance companies that are in the area. Residents, 75% of individuals that have choices whether to be with a private healthcare provider or the community-organized health system, choose the community-organized health system. It's also, the administrative costs are far less. On the community-organized health system side, administration's about 5%. On the private health insurance, it's between 15 and 20%. So there's lots of reasons why we have a perfectly good idea and that it should be recognized by the state. Unfortunately, this, from what we understand, the state has rejected the idea. They want to see all of the remaining counties that are not managed, which is approximately 18, all stick together because it'll make it more advantageous for the private health insurance companies as far as being able to afford to manage the Medi-Cal population. So we're, we're pretty disappointed about that and there's a coalition of us, the counties that are working very hard to see this happen and we've been meeting over the phone. There is a stakeholder meeting that the state called at the end of the week, so we'll be on that call with our other partners and there'll be some people down there in Sacramento meeting. But what we're trying to do at this point is actually postpone the stakeholders' meeting, have more discussions. At the same time this is going on, we've been in touch with, again, with Chesbrough's office and Evans and Nielsen and any, any representatives in the region and they're all on board. And Wesley and Nielsen are putting together a letter to Diana Dooley, who's the Secretary for Health and Human Services Agency. So that's going on. What we sort of anticipate here is that we're going to need potentially your direct involvement. We might need representatives from the Board of Supervisors from all the counties to meet with Diana Dooley. That's a possibility. We certainly will be meeting with our legislator and talking to them more about this. On the other hand, I've also communicated, this is sort of directed to David here, to CSAC and CSAC understands the issues as well as RCRC. We've communicated with them, so we might need some particular support, David, in the area from CSAC. So there's a lot going on. Unfortunately, nothing's ever simple working in the state of California. We had, we thought a simple solution, workable, we were all on board, no, not okay. So this is going to take some, some, some work on all of our parts, but it's worth it. The, the difference is significant. We, one of the issues we're particularly worried about is, you know how difficult it's been in recruitment for healthcare professionals in our community? If we have an unfriendly, sort of not locally-oriented plan that's serving essentially a third of the population, that cannot be favorable for healthcare providers. So the last thing we want to do is alienate our providers. Everyone's on board here, the hospital council of Northern California's on board, so we really are going to work very hard to see this succeed. And that's sort of the update right now. Any questions, comments?
What was the reasoning for them to reject?
Because they'd like to see a large enough population, lives as it's called, that the private insurance companies can bid on it and make it worth their while. And that's what we understand is the, is the reasoning behind it. This would be about a three-beat peeling off, about a third of the population, 30% of the population that's not managed would go into these, the community-organized health system, the eight counties, it's about, it's about 30%. So they still have 70% of the population that could be served by private insurance.
So we had eight counties that we wanted to do.
Right.
But now they have us with 18?
Right, currently.
And of those 18, are any of those really big counties?
But, Butte is probably the largest and imperial. Sutter. There's some good-sized counties. Now, I don't know if some of the other counties may want to also get involved in a community-organized health system, maybe they don't want to set a precedent. It's clearly a better way to go. a better way to go. And, you know, maybe after, if we're successful, others may try to do the same thing. We just don't know.
My question.
Yeah.
Gary, how much does this have to do with CMSP?
Well, it's sort of a lesson learned. CMSP contracts with Anthem Blue Cross to manage healthcare for essentially the population that are low-income adults without children. And to give you an example, the difficulties they've had, they've not only not been able to negotiate an agreement with Sutter Systems in the counties that they serve, which is about 30-some counties. Sutter has, Sutter's healthcare system has said, "We no longer want to participate in the plan." However, there's two counties where Sutter is the only hospital. So, those negotiations have been dragging on unsuccessfully. There's no resolution. This is just one example of when you have a larger insurance company that's concerned about sort of this large population, it's very difficult to reach agreements at the local level. And so, that's just one example of the kinds of things. If there's no agreement, if Sutter does not, Sutter Coast cannot agree with Anthem, then Sutter will end up having more unreimbursed care. Our residents will be reluctant to access health services there because, you know, they're going to end up with a bill.
Well, I was just thinking about what you had said about the administrative costs are so much less than they are with private insurance companies. And I saw that with CMSP. I saw big administrative costs, big, giant. I don't know what we can do about that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks for the update, Gary.
I do have.
Yeah. Supervisor Hemmingson?
I'd like to take a minute just to recognize our clerk of the board. This is her last meeting, I believe. She's going on to bigger and better things, which we wish her the best. Her smiling face and professionalism is going to be sorely missed. And good luck. Good luck.
I don't think we ought to let her go.
I don't either. She'll be close enough. We can run down, have lunch with her.
No. She's done a great job, and it's, unfortunately, a lot of times when you get people that are overqualified for the job, they move on to the next level. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Jeremy.
All right. We-
Thank you, Jeremy.
I told her that we needed to all make out our list for her to hand to the next clerk of the board, you know, the chocolate in the bowl, two or three days a week, and taking care of David's travel plans.
I just wanted to thank you all. You were a great board, and I really appreciated working with you. And I'm going to miss you. So, thank you.
Come visit.
All right. With that, we will adjourn the meeting.